Good evening and I'd like to call the City of North Augusta, special call city council meeting for May the 27th, 2025 to order. Thank you everybody being here. Thank you for being here. It's not listed on this agenda, but if you would, you're welcome to join me in prayer. Dear God, we continue to ask for your guidance. We ask that you give us discernment to make the best decisions for the citizens of North Augusta. We ask for your blessings as we strive to honor you in our roles as elected officials. Amen. If able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, roll call starter from our far left. John Fenite, Robert Freitas.
Pat Carpenter.
Britten Williams.
Kevin Tool.
David Buck.
Dennis Griaideco.
Very good. We move into new business. We have one item, item three, Public Services, Resolution 2025-15 to accept grant award from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority and provide matching funds for the eight eight-inch wastewater pipe upgrade project, Phase One. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Agreed.
All right, who was that first one?
That's Pat.
That was Ms. Carpenter.
And I was second.
All right, Mr. Buck, thank you, sir. I said it all at the same time. It sounded like it was three of you. I knew one female voice, the other two men, I came to figure out. Any thoughts about this, Ms. Clifford?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me, I'll take a few minutes to let the council know what we're doing here with this resolution, what you're doing here with this resolution. And this was not discussed in the study session. This was due to some way breaking coordination we have with the Rural Infrastructure Authority. If I can kind of rewind the tape, the city was in receipt of a little over $7 million of Rural Infrastructure Authority skip money for our wastewater interceptor project. And that project is ongoing and is going well. And that's handling the kind of the interstate highway pipes of the sewer system that's here in the city limits. And those bids, when we received those, came in well under our estimates. So it's one of the few times we've actually had that happen where we had, you know, millions of dollars left over, if you will. And so in discussion and dialogue with the Rural Infrastructure Authority, we did a change order to our scope of the project. And again, because of the way that this grant was applied for and received, this is strictly for wastewater infrastructure. So the money associated with this skip grant cannot be used for water or for stormwater, it can only be used for wastewater. So with that in mind, James Sutton put together a change order request which would allow us to fully fund one of our lift stations to be refurbished. And the Rural Infrastructure Authority approved that change order. And so we're still coming in under overall budget. Rural Infrastructure Authority has very similar rules to the city as it comes to federal ARPA and skip dollars. And so ultimately, those funds have to be fully expended by the first of June 2026 and have the project be completed by that period of time. So the Rural Infrastructure Authority is, you know, racing the clock, so to speak, to make sure these projects are done. So the city has fully vested their portion of the skip grant. We had a matching fund that we were required to do, and we spent all that as required at that point in time. The amount that's left over right now is just under $1.9 million. That's the Rural Infrastructure Authority's money. That was part of that $7.9 million that was associated with that grant. And so in our dialogue with the RIA, there's a couple of different options that they have. One is to take that money and apply it against other projects in the state of South Carolina that they feel can meet the timing of those projects. James Sutton came up with a alternate project change order for our wastewater system. And so even though the interceptor pipes are the largest of the pipes that are here within the system, there is still millions of dollars worth of rehab work that could be done on our eight-inch pipe, which is the next size down, if you will, in our wastewater system. And so we have submitted a change order request, number two, to the Rural Infrastructure Authority to add that as a component of this grant. Based on the way that this is a significant change from the first part of the grant, they have requested a 15% match, which is the normal RIA match for skip funding to be identified if this comes through. And I'd also like to say that we haven't been granted this grant yet. This is a grant application that we have in with the Rural Infrastructure Authority. We may get it, we may not. But I wanted to make sure that if we were given this grant from the RIA to do the eight-inch pipe, that we could move out on it as quickly as possible. So I wanted to secure the city's match funding out of the Utility Construction Fund, which has $7 million in that fund. And really, that's what this fund is for. So it's to allow us to potentially match fund with other outside sources when possible to get the most bang for your buck. So essentially, if we are approved, we'd be getting a $2 million project for about $300,000. So my request to the council, and this all came to light as far as the timing of this, in a meeting that we had with the Rural Infrastructure Authority on Thursday. So I wanted to make sure that this was before the council for consideration, and that if you approve this, I'll be able to send a letter to RIA saying, we have guaranteed match funding from the City of North Augusta. And then if you allocate those funds towards our project, we'll immediately go out and go into the request for proposals to find us a contractor to do that slip lining work. And I'll pause for any questions from the council.
When was the last time this section of pipe got work?
I'm sure this section of pipe has had repairs, but I believe most of this pipe was originally laid in the 1950s and 60s. So what we're talking about is clay pipe infrastructure. And one of the reasons why James Sutton and his team picked these specific neighborhoods that are listed here in your resolution, which I believe were Crestland, Summerfield, and Lynnhurst, is that that particular section of pipe does not require us to open up the road. Hammond Hills requires us to open up the road. But these neighborhoods will allow us to do manhole-to-manhole slip lining. And again, speed is of essence, right? So at the end of the day, if we come across a section of pipe that is compromised or has numerous point repairs, we're just going to skip it. And we're going to move to the next section of pipe and slip line that. Because we want to be able to get the $1.9 million of work in and fully obligated and completed before the one June 2026 date. If we run beyond that, we'd have the risk of having to return funds or refund to RIA, and that would not be a good scenario. So we're trying to make the best use of time and the fastest projects that we can do.
You're confident as far as if we get the grant and we're able to move forward, that we can hit that deadline?
Mr. Mayor, I am confident. And I say that because we looked at a number of different options to include adding a second lift station. There were a lot of different aspects we could have looked at, or that James did look at. So he looked at lift stations, he looked at different aspects of pipe. But this particular project is one that he felt highly confident that we could get done in that amount of time. And I trust James' judgment in this matter.
So I'm assuming the RIA, they are looking for projects, because they don't want to, if we have these excess funds, they don't want to give it to another municipality that may not get it done. So they're just on the timeline. So we're confident we can get it done. I would think that'd be helpful.
I would agree. And I have communicated that to numerous staffers within the Rural Infrastructure Authority. We have a very good relationship with the Rural Infrastructure Authority. And again, I'm confident that if we're given this project, we'll be able to complete it. And this will be one more step in that, to be able to show them that we have, you know, grant funding identified. So anything we could do to lessen the timeline, you know, to get this thing out to bid would be beneficial for us. I don't want to have a situation where you don't have a grant funding in hand. They say, hey, you can get this grant contingent on your match funding, and then it's another two-week cycle for us to come back to city council and get this adjudicated or approved.
Just, you mentioned a little bit, maybe just for our citizens, can you kind of talk about the city's Utility Construction Fund, where this is coming from, and exactly what that is for, so people don't understand how limited the use it can be used for?
Absolutely. So, Mr. Mayor, the Utility Construction Fund is designed and established to assist with our city utility functions. And so the way I would look at it is, those funds are designed primarily for the water and wastewater funds. We have a separate stormwater fund that's within our city budget. But really, water and wastewater are the fund balances that this project money can be used for, or at least, you know, most readily be used for. Again, that's not the kind of thing that, much like with ARPA funds, we didn't want to fully expend ARPA funds by themselves against projects. We always look for opportunities to partner that with grant funding, RIA funding, outside funding, to really stretch our dollar. Because we could spend every dollar of the Utility Construction Fund today and still have clay pipe infrastructure throughout the city. So we're trying to make sure we're being judicious with the application of those funds against grant opportunities.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Clifford, is the, is the work done by an outside group, or is that done by city employees?
It is. It will be done by an outside group. So the current infrastructure project with the interceptor lines is being done through SAC contracting, which is an out-of-town firm. But they're also partnered with Augusta, I believe Industrial Solutions, that are doing the, you know, part of the camera work from involved. So we have a local firm partnering with an out-of-town firm that's doing this work, but is not physically done by our city personnel. Whereas with the lift station, lift station, when we do that, that will be done by city personnel.
All right. Are there any citizen comments? Any council discussion or follow-up questions for?
Just to be clear, this hasn't been worked on majorly since the 50s or 60s. And this is just like a clarify me if I'm wrong. We're going to get $600,000 worth of desperately needed infrastructure for $300,000. We're going to have to spend that $300,000 in the future anyway if we don't fix this now. This is kind of where I'm getting.
I would agree with that statement, Councilman.
Probably more than that, yeah. It'd be more than $600,000.
It would have to be spent regardless at some point in time, is the point that I'm trying to make, is that those, those infrastructure needs are out there. It just comes down to when do those projects go. And the benefit of doing this proactively as opposed to reactively is when those sewer pipes collapse. You know, what it does is it causes sinkholes in either people's yards or in the streets. And it allows groundwater to intrude into the pipe system, which means we're paying more money for treatment there at the Horse Creek plant. So there's a lot of downsides to having even a partially compromised pipe system underground.
Any council discussion? Okay, here and now, I'm going to ask for a vote, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Very good. Thank you. And this officially might be the fastest meeting we've ever had. We stand adjourned. We're right back into the study session. We stand adjourned. I'd like to call the special call study session for Tuesday, May the 27th, 2025 to order. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our city administrator, Mr. Jim Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as is our practice for a study session, we'll do an agenda review for next week's items. We'll have department details from all the directors. And then we'll also have a focus item tonight, the primary, which being is a potential option of impact fees. And I know that's going to be a weighty topic, so I'm going to try to step wildly through the other aspects of the agenda review, so we can get to the focus item. So I'll start off, there's no old business under our agenda for next week, and we'll move into new business. And so we've got a few items first, starting off with ordinance number 2025-11, Amending Section 12-21 (9) related to hours for construction work, first reading. So this is something that the city council had been given before in a study session, and we had a wide variety of feedback from the DIAS. So this is our second attempt to put this in front of the council. And so really, what came to light as we were going through dealing with homeowners and also construction agents, is that the noise hours limit work on Saturdays. And so right now, what you have is, you know, the work hours are listed as Monday through Friday. And so if you're a homeowner and you want to have a contractor come to your house to do work on your shed, if you want to have somebody come over and do any kind of noise, this point kind of activity outside your house, you know, currently by the ordinance that is not allowed. And likewise with some of our building contractors that are here in town that are working on new developments, by the letter of the law, they're not supposed to be causing, you know, noise ordinance issues on Saturday as well. So the feedback that I recall from our last floor into this in front of the study session was that the council did not seem amenable to taking the exact same work hours that were Monday through Friday and applying it to Saturday. So this is, again, not a final draft, that's why it's a draft. And so ultimately, what you have there in your resolution is our first floor, back and down, which is suggestion for work hours of nine to five on Saturday. And so if there are, if there's basically, you know, four of the seven of you that say, hey, that's, that's good, we're going to move forward with that, then that's the way the resolution will read going forward. But I'm certainly open to taking feedback from the DIAS today on whether or not those hours are amenable to the city council, or whether they would like to see different hours put in there, or not at all on a Saturday. But I wanted to at least get this back into the conversation for council to consider. And so I will pause, because I know we'll have some questions and comments and discussion on this one.
I've got a question. It says this section shall, read it, "construction work." So that means people building. But, you know, we talked about, let's say Kevin wanted to cut his grass or build a shed on Saturday. Does this pertain just to construction workers or every citizen in North Augusta who might be doing something on Saturday?
The section that is amended per the resolution, Councilwoman, is the erection, including excavation, demolition, alteration, or repair work on any building is allowed only to 20 hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. So I would not read that as grass cutting activities, but I would read that as if you have to repair your house, if you have to, if you're putting a addition on your house, if you got something that's going on there right now, based on the city ordinance, that's not allowed on a Saturday.
But with this pass, it will be allowed?
That's correct.
Mr. Clifford, I would, I would certainly vote in favor of this, this nine to five. I see that many times these repairs on homes, time is of the essence for these people. And I believe the construction field is accustomed to working six days a week, if not seven. I know last weekend, I was awakened at 7:45 by the neighbor and his yard man over there. So there's lots of noise out there anyway. This particular ordinance, though, it says for buildings, on buildings. Is that correct? And it doesn't apply, as Ms. Carpenter mentioned, doesn't apply to?
Does not apply to yard work activities. So cutting your grass is not violation of the ordinance. But there has to be, all the items that are listed below, which is including alteration and repair work.
We have so much work that, that is being done here now on reconstruction of homes and repairs of homes and building of homes, that I personally would support this nine to five.
So, Mr. Clifford, I would just say, why, why nine and not seven?
So Councilman, prior to you being seated with the new council members, the previous council had objected to be hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And I got broad consensus from the DIAS at that point in time that those were not acceptable hours. And they wanted more restricted hours at that point in time. If the council, as you now have a new makeup on the DIAS, have a difference of opinion, I'm not emotionally tied to the hours per se, other than the fact that I wanted to at least get something on the table for consideration.
I just know a lot of these construction-type jobs, they're
I just know a lot of these construction-type jobs, they're roofers, for example, on a roof, but, you know, they try to get started as early as possible. And so you could be, you know, putting people at danger at work for heat exhaustion, things like that.
I agree with Mr. Friedus. In the heat of the summer, you do not want to get started at nine o'clock. You may as well not even bother. Seven, eight o'clock gives them time to knock off at five and have a lunch hour. Honestly, with, you go to Lowe's on Saturday in North Augusta, you don't know there's not construction going on anywhere.
Well, let's maybe change...
Well, I mean, one of our former city councilmen, his comment was, you know, the bottom line is we need to put hours on there, but, you know, if we put seven, we'll probably have people there at five. So kind of if we really, if you think they're going to be there at seven, the reality, we put nine, they'll probably be there. I mean, I know that sounds kind of crazy. So just seven's a little bright and early.
Yeah.
I didn't think we, I didn't even care if I didn't agree. The seven just seemed a little...
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I've been too. I mean, I have no qualms. I 100% think we need to open it up and allow for construction on Saturdays. It's silly that we don't. I haven't, in fairness, thought about, you know, early hours and the conducive, conducive ness, certainly working in the summertime later in the day. But, you know, I think the intent of moving it from seven, from the longer hours to the shorter hours is to try to strike a balance for not, to allow the builders to have some flexibility to work on Saturdays, but also provide some noise protection for the neighbors that are having to deal with it. And I mean, that was, that was the extent of a lot of what the conversation was about, is you have folks living in a neighborhood saying, they're building a subdivision behind my house, and I've got to hear I'm hammering on roofs at seven o'clock in the morning in the weeks. I don't need to get two hours apiece. And you've got the builders who rightfully say, well, we need, we need to build on Saturdays. I mean, you're taking a whole day of construction away. So the intent, I think, was to try to strike some kind of compromise between those two actions, if you will. Yeah, I mean, I don't feel strongly, I feel strongly that we need to allow construction on Saturdays. I probably could be swayed on the time either way, but I feel like nine was a decent compromise to try to at least provide a palatable solution that, as much as any solution can work for everybody, at least attempts to.
Yeah. I agree, you know, kind of just what you're saying. Not 100% had to be at nine, I mean, 8:30?
Yeah, I mean...
Eight, but I don't think any earlier than that for sure.
I think, I think the problem there is that enforcement of that is going to be difficult. So saying that a little later start on Saturday is appropriate, I don't think there's going to be anybody out there saying the construction people can't start at 8:30. There's not going to be anybody that's finding them. But I think, giving the idea that you can work on Saturday, start a little later, maybe do some inside work before you get to the outside work, and have them plan the noise levels so that you don't, you don't move on Saturday. Move on Friday. If you have to start at seven, then do it on Friday.
I think the other thing is, this kind of got spun as if this was strictly about new construction or subdivisions. And the reality is, if I've got stuff I've got to do at my house, you know, the reality, I just, my wife is not going to want, I mean, here's the thing. What we're trying to do on both sides, I think we're trying to be respectful of citizens to say nine o'clock, to Kevin's point, and we are being respectful to construction developers. But the reality is, if it gets hot, guess what? That's the risk you take if you're a roof. You know, our job is not to, we're not trying to make their job easier. We're just trying to give them an opportunity to do their work. And it's up to them to manage what that looks like. So, I mean, the heat and that part, that's their personal issue with the construction side. I think what we need to do is to say, do we, do we think we need to have it for Saturday, which I think we all agree on? And again, just like we're going to do this now, if, we need to change it down the road if we start getting a lot of feedback, and we can go back and change it.
Change it, that's right.
The key is, we need to, we need to say Saturday's available. So I'm saying, let's start with nine, and then if something happens, we start getting deluged, people saying nine's too late, and then we can address it. We have the power here to address changes. It's not, part of what we're trying to do is, we've got a lot of ordinances that go back 40 and 50 years, and we're trying to update things, and this is, one of those needs to be updated.
I mean, I, I would support nine. And it's not going to help you at all by me saying this. I probably shouldn't say it, but I mean, if it came out that it was seven or eight o'clock, I don't think I would vote against it. It just wouldn't be my preference. I guess from, I guess my question, Mr. Mayor, from the DIAS is, how many council members are good with it as it is currently written from nine to five? Because if you have four, then we'll move forward with that.
We're not going to vote on this, but just consensus, I'm fine with nine.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Kevin, you saying you're good with nine?
I'm fine.
And again, we have the ability to adapt, but we just need to do, we need to move forward. I think we've got enough to be able...
I'm, Mr. Mayor, then...
That is efficient.
Right. So this is just guidance, not votes. The guidance I believe that I've received from the council is that the resolution as presented is acceptable to be considered for next week on the agenda, and we will leave it as so, or as such, in the packet for you to consider next week.
And Councilman Tool, when he hears his neighbor at 6:30 this Saturday, Monday, he may be jumping to 10 o'clock.
Or not at all. We'll see, but yeah.
I'll see what happens.
All right. Well, if we can, we'll move on to item number seven. Resolution number 2025-16 to adopt the Georgia Avenue Traffic Calming and Pedestrian Access Study. And again, we had a wide-ranging discussion about this in a previous council meeting about what this, you know, adoption means. It doesn't mean that the fourth thing is funded. It doesn't mean that you're going to do all those things in there. And the best example I can give you is the Martin Town Road Corridor Study. There's a lot of things that are in that study. Many of those things are not going to be happening. So, for example, the traffic circle at Gregory Lake and Martin Town Road, that's, you know, that's not reality right now, because there's no funding for it, and the council hasn't made a specific action. So what you got when the previous council and the previous mayor received the Martin Town Road Corridor Study was just a receipt of information that you recognized that the city had paid for a service, which we did in conjunction with outside organizations, and that that service has been rendered, and that we have, you as the council are in receipt of that information, and that you can choose to do things with that information, or choose not to do things with that information, but just that that is the information that had been provided in the form that has been provided.
Yeah. I just want to follow up on two points for council. As you, as you know, we talked about it, JD and I both met with both, Grayson and I met at the church in First Baptist, met with both ministers, several of their team. They were very pleased, they heard, like everybody, rumor that we were going to do a roundabout. And so they were very, very pleased that that's not what we're dealing with, okay? My comment to them was, we would not have gone down this road about that roundabout without doing what we did on Phase One, which we had an open meeting for all the business owners. We had an open meeting for citizens. So, but as far as Phase One, and the fact that they were actually going to lose some parking, they were fine with it, because they have a parking lot, and it wasn't a big deal. So JD, my, we were very, they were very positive about Phase One. I said, that's all we're worried about. That's the first thing. And then the second thing, which was so wonderful, the input we got from citizens, which I told you that night, it kind of surprised me, but we are going to put a speed limit sign. I'm going to let JD talk about it. He'll have pictures for council and everybody next Monday. Why don't you tell me that what you and Tom in DOT of ours are working on?
Yeah, sure. Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, as mentioned at the public input session, and we discussed moving the driver feedback speed limit sign, which folks were commenting on, it was a little bit too far down the hill. Got with Tom Zeaser, our engineer, and he picked out a spot as far as the hill it can go with still being on AC power and not solar, which is right there at Jackson and Georgia Avenue. So that, he has applied to SC DOT for the encroachment permit and started the process on that. It is a little bit of a, you know, lengthy process. We're already getting started on it. So the application is in, looking to move that up. The road has been keeping a static speed limit sign where the driver feedback sign currently is at First Baptist. So that's, that's the plan moving forward, as we discussed.
And we'll have pictures of where that looks like.
I'll provide some pictures next week. Yes, sir.
Mr. McCauley, the Jackson and Georgia Avenue intersection is hard to see. Can it be moved up?
No, he means farce. Did they say Jackson? Yeah. He meant, he... I'm sorry, I meant farce. That makes more sense. Yes, I'm sorry. It's, it's a malfunction junction, and the traffic circle got me flustered. But yes, it's up, as you're familiar with, that area is much more conducive, and that's what Tom Zeaser specified.
I just want the council to be aware of those two things.
Okay. So, subject to any questions, I'd like to move on to the next item. And that's also engineering resolution number 2025-17. So this is related, but not identical. And so this is authorizing the city in North Augusta to enter a professional engineering services contract with Kimberly-Horn for transportation engineering services. And I know this is another thing that was widely discussed in the study session about, you know, the phases of the operation. We, as the city staff, had considered, you know, Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One being the straight-line portion of Georgia Avenue, really from Center Street or Bluff Avenue all the way up to Malfunction Junction, and then Malfunction Junction itself is much further down the road, is a Phase Two. So Kimberly-Horn did not break out those, those phases in their study. And so in the resolution that's before you for consideration cleanly lays out that this is this phase and this is that phase. So Phase One is specifically this section here, all the way up to where the traffic circle is shown on the diagrams. And so what we're asking for the city council to consider is moving forward with an engineering firm. So Kimberly-Horn went through and did kind of the pre-engineering and the coordination with SC DOT to see what was in the art of the possible for Georgia Avenue. And now you have to go through the technical specifications of, okay, what's it actually going to take in, from an engineering perspective, to make that a reality? And then also give us better costing data of what that would look like. So my recommendation would be to move forward with Kimberly-Horn. This was done through a panel through an RFQ, not an RFP. So this is a request for qualifications. And we looked at multiple engineering firms. We had a number of our city staff members sitting on that panel. We also included Dr. Melmar from the Lower Savannah Council Governments to sit on our panel as well to have an outside view. And that group all came to the conclusion that Kimberly-Horn was going to be the best engineering firm to get us to that point. And so if the city approves this, or the city council approves, we move forward with naming them as a contract lead, and then they'll start doing the engineering portions of this. But we would come back to the council before any additional funding was spent. So there'd be, you'll see no construction until we come back with a proposal for a general contractor and some cost data to move forward from there. And I imagine, from flash to bang, from your time of implementation of this resolution to time coming back to council for the next decision point, will be well into this year. So several, several months before, we'll be able to come back and say, hey, here's, here's what we think it's going to cost to do the whole project. And then we may have a decision point about whether we're going to do a smaller portion of that or a larger portion, and how we would move forward from there. But this would just allows us to get more into the technical specifications of what Georgia Avenue traffic calming would look like.
But also, in this resolution, basically what we're saying that when it comes going forward, not just Phase One or even Phase Two or whatever, Kimberly-Horn will be our firm that we'll be using for any transportation engineering services in other areas. So what we don't want to do is have to go through this regular rule every time. We want to do RFQ qualifications, and that's what we've done with some other areas.
So they would basically be an on-call firm for the city to do any kind of transportation engineering work for a period of time. It's not an open-ended contract, you know, there's sensitive dates on those, but ultimately, we want to have them for a period of time, because there may be some additional work that has to happen that's off of Georgia Avenue, that's in the downtown corridor or in other parts of the city. And so it'd be helpful to have the same firm looking at a holistic picture as opposed to two different engineering firms or transportation firms trying to look at the same problem.
That's not uncommon. That's what we've done that we've glanced in in other areas.
We have, we have container firms for engineering, for electrical work, for, you know, any number of different functions. All right. So just any questions on that? We're going to move into item number nine. Resolution number 2025-18, establishing agreement to participate in the Lower Savannah Regional Home Consortium. So this is, we have an agreement currently with the Lower Savannah Council of Governments. The resolution is not in your packet. We'll have that for you by Friday. But it's basically a continuation of an existing agreement we have. We actually fall into multiple councils of government based on our location, both in Ridgefield and Aiken County. The majority of the work that we do with the councils of government is through the Aiken County or Lower Savannah Council of Governments, which is, you know, resident within Aiken County. We do a lot of work with Dr. Melmar and his staff, and they're also a conduit through which, you know, certain federal funds are available for entities here within the state of South Carolina. So our recommendation would be to maintain the relationships we have through, with the Lower Savannah Council Governments. So just any questions on that? Last, we'll have item number 10, engineering resolution number 2025-19, authorizing the city in North Augusta to enter into a contract for fence repairs to public stormwater detention facilities and wastewater pump station sites. This should be, I believe, the final contract that we are looking to let, that has to do with Hurricane Helene response. And so Tom Zeaser and James Sutton's collaborated on this to get one, one contract together so that we could repair all of the city fencing, because we've got fencing that goes around the stormwater detention ponds that the city is responsible for, I believe we have 11, and then also some of the wastewater sites that also have fencing. And so that is the reason why there's no resolution inside your packet, is because those bids close on Thursday. And so Tom Zeaser already has the resolution written up, but does not have an identified vendor as of yet. So Thursday, we'll do the bid. That's a request for proposals, not qualifications, so we'll go to a low-bid vendor, and as soon as that bid is opened and validated, we'll go ahead and put that in as a resolution and request you all move forward on that, so we could finish out those fencing apparatus as we go forward. Subject to your questions, that's all I have for next week's agenda review, and I'm going to turn it over to Jamie for department details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First up is finance, however, we're going to defer that down to the focus item under 3AII. And so we'll discuss that later. So first up will be Human Resources Manager, Kayla Ferguson.
Evening, Mayor and Council. If you look on the back of your department details, you will see a list of our open employment opportunities.
Thank you. Next up is Engineering and Public Works Director, Tom Zeaser.
So again, hate to rehash Friday update information, but again, to reiterate, we have a contractor that is, was scheduled today to pave the alley between, we call it the Bluff Avenue Alley. That work was delayed due to weather, and he is scheduled to do that tomorrow, to complete that resurfacing. And then we also have our contractor who's working on the stadium, the terrace leak is, he's scheduled to do the concrete pour on Thursday, this coming Thursday. And so that will be a major step towards the completion of that work. Once that concrete is down, things should move very rapidly to restoring that space for use. No leaks reported today as a result of all the rain we had this week.
No leaks at all, from all the chest. That's great.
And then this was not on the agenda, but we also, similar to the wastewater pipelining contract that's ongoing, we have a similar contract to do a very limited number of storm pipes. And that's basically to reline those pipes where we have active sinkholes, usually mostly in rear and side yard of residences, so it's inaccessible to excavation equipment. That work is scheduled to begin within the next two weeks. Those sites, real quick, are 554 Dove Street, 609 Ridgefield Drive, 940 Media Avenue, and 1910 Bowlin Road, and then a section of stormpipe that's on city property near our public works operations facility.
Very good. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Next up is Planning and Development Director, Tommy Paradise.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We will have our regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting a week from tonight. Thank you, sir.
Next up is Public Services Director, James Sutton.
We will have our regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting a week from tonight.
Next up is Public Services Director, James Sutton.
Mayor, Council. This past Friday in Rizlin, South Carolina, we had a few of our Public Services team members to go out and participate in the annual BIKO rodeo sponsored by the American Public Works Association. A rodeo, BIKO rodeo is where our staff goes out, gets on a piece of equipment and goes through various maneuvers with it and demonstrates her abilities and skills that are timed and judged. And I have a good announcement to make that we had two of our employees who won first place and second place. Cameron Paradise, utility firm, won first place. And Jason Sykes, our superintendent sanitation, won second place. Both of them have been invited by the American Public Services, Public Works Association to go to the state competitions that will be held on June 23rd in Spartanburg.
Thank you. You should shoot me their email. Email me their names.
I will.
You just told me about that.
And we plan on doing some public posting.
Perfect. That's exciting. Good job, James.
They did a good job. Moving on, this week, our meter technicians, which I don't talk too much about, and want to announce that they are going to be reading routes 126 through 136.
Thank you, James. Next up is Public Safety Chief Johnson.
Good evening. As you can see on your sheet, on Friday, we will be doing a web-based assessment for our accreditation. It's a four-year process and each year we have to do it and maintain it. And they start on Friday going through about 160 of our different policies and standards that we had to keep up with. And then we'll be doing interviews next week and receiving feedback from them to make sure everything's in line and that we're delivering the best possible product for the citizens of North Augusta. Also, as many of y'all are aware, we've had cop cars. Our 11th edition of cop cars just come out this year. And those were funded through the South Carolina Opioid Relief Fund. And each one of them has a slogan on the back of it, safety tips, save a life, get an RCAN. That way it's out there for everybody. I have an example of one so that everybody can see what we're talking about.
Okay. Chief, if you would, I ask you about this. Just ask you about the fire truck I saw at the Mobies' car wash. You want to tell, just in case somebody asks.
So that's a fire truck. That's a fire truck that is owned by Mobies. That is not one of the North Augusta Public Safety Fire Trucks. I've noticed it's been there about the last week or two. So that is not our truck. We wash our trucks at the station. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Next up is Parks and Recreation Director, Rick Meyer.
Good evening. First update is Creighton Park Playground Replacement, the last piece of the puzzle. The turf of the playground is all this left to accomplish. They were to get started yesterday, but obviously the weather here did not cooperate. The crew is back on site today. It will be about a five-day installation for the turf. And again, that'll be if the weather cooperates the rest of this week. So stay tuned for hopefully a soon-to-be-announced ribbon-cutting ceremony for Creighton Park. Riverview Park Elevator Modernization Project. Wanted to make sure that y'all were aware that the elevator piece is predominantly finished. We're waiting on a fire panel. And it turned out it was a fire panel that Johnson Controls did not have in stock, had to order. And that's what's kind of keeping that elevator shut down for now because we cannot have an inspection without a fire alarm system for that new elevator. So we're close. This Friday, Splash Day, May 30th, at Riverview Park, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Cat Team, fire truck will be there, splash water on kids, we'll have free hot dogs and drinks for everybody. And then starting next week with the month of June is our summer camp time. And the first camp up is Tree North Cross Training Camp, and they already have over 300 people registered. In the month of June, we'll do over 500 kids in camp at Riverview Park.
Good stuff, Rick. Yep. All right. Thank you all.
To close all the departments is Tourism Manager, Carl Walther.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to update you on a few things. We've had some contractors in and out of the community center over the past week. We've had some interior painting going on. It's looked really good. They've gotten through the banquet room. They moved on to common areas. And we also onboard a lighting contractor to address some of the issues, the lighting that were in there, is well needed. Saturday, June 7th, is going to be Explore North Augusta Night, the Green Jackets game at SRP Park. It's also a lot going on that evening. It's one of their special uniform nights, CSRA River Donkeys. It's going to be a kayak giveaway and fireworks after the show, but you'll see a lot of Explore North Augusta splattered all over the stadium that night. We have a ribbon cutting on Thursday, June 19th, at 4:00 p.m. at the corner of Carolina and Butler Avenues. Give us some bearing on that. That's across from Fairview Presbyterian. Kind of got a twofer on that one. We're expecting our new trolley to be onboard that evening for Third Thursday. And there's also a historical marker being placed identifying the Augusta-Aiken Trolley Stop that used to be there. Millich Murray, one of our residents, has done a lot of work in making that happen.
That's a great way to tie in. I'm glad, Millich, that's good.
It is. Yes, sir. He's excited about it, for sure. Lastly, I want to announce our summer series. We just wrapped up our spring concert series a week or two ago with the Going South Concert, but we got our summer lineup. If you look in your packet, we've got three movies that are lined up. June 28th, we'll have Dog Man. July 26th, Sonic Three. And August 30th, we'll have Minecraft. Just going to show a family movie on a big screen down there. We'll have free popcorn, cotton candy for any folks that attend. And lastly, 803 Night, which we do in partnership with the Green Jackets, August 3rd, kind of play on that. We're going to have the swinging medallions after the Green Jackets game that afternoon. It's going to be a...
What day is that, Carl?
August 3rd. And the game time's at 1:35. And after that game concludes, we're expecting the concert to go on at about 4:30 or 5 o'clock or so.
Okay.
Sounds fun.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Clifford.
Thank you, Jamie. What we have for tonight for our focus item is the main event, if you will, is going to be a discussion with Carson Bice from Tisha Bice to talk about impact fees. We've had this discussion before, but I know we have a number of new council members. And so what I'd also like to highlight for the crew this evening, council members, is that there is no resolution or ordinance that is on the agenda for next week that has to do with impact fees. Because I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to look at this, get a staff recommendation, and then have some time kind of in between this event and then also a potential vote on an impact fee within the city. So with that, I just asked Tommy Paradise, our planning director, to invite Carson Bice to come back and give a refresh on what the impact fee study shows. Carson is well-posed to talk about this topic as he's done a number of studies within the state of South Carolina. He can talk about trends, about what's happening across the state. And as you all know, South Carolina is one of the fastest-growing states in the country. And so while a lot of that growth is happening down in Mo Country and on the Greenville area, we're experiencing some of their fair share of growth in Aiken, Edgfield Counties, and specifically here in North Augusta. So with that, I'd like to invite you, Carson, to come on up and give us his benefit of his wisdom here when it comes to impact fees.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Mayor.
Good to have you on this again, sir.
Do I have the controller? I can't remember. Okay. Okay. Yeah, it should be evident. It should be evident. So, yeah. Yeah, South Carolina is a rapidly growing state. I can just tell you, sort of anecdotally, you know, five years ago, we may get two, three jobs a year in South Carolina. And now South Carolina is our busiest state, even busier than Arizona for us. A little bit about our firm, we're based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho. And we do have a unique focus on cost of growth issues, particularly as it relates to fiscal and economic impact analysis, as well as impact fees and infrastructure financing strategies. We've done more of this type of work than any other firm. And we've also done more of this type of work in the state of South Carolina as well.
Carson, I hate to interrupt, but you're tall and you speak well, but if you don't mind, maybe just speak a little bit more into the microphone because we do live stream this.
Sure.
I would hate people not to be able to hear.
Sure. Thanks. First time I've ever been accused of talking softly. Next slide, please. A little bit about impact fees in general, because I know we've got some new faces here. They are a one-time payment designed to offset new developments' impact on different infrastructure systems that the community operates. They are implemented by a resolution ordinance. Generally, those ordinances and resolutions stipulate that the fees are collected generally at the time of building permit rather than certificate of occupancy. They cannot be used for operations, maintenance, or replacement. So, you know, in general terms, depending on the methodology, and I'll talk a little bit about that shortly, we have to use the fees to expand our infrastructure capacity, meaning that we buy additional parkland, we build additional baseball fields. We replace, for instance, a dilapidated tennis court with two or three tennis courts, and a percentage of that is impact fee eligible. We can also pay ourselves back for infrastructure that we've front-loaded or up-fronted for new development. I'll talk a little bit about that. I also think it's important to acknowledge that impact fees are not a tax. And the reason I say that is I've been to many meetings across the country where someone says, this is simply a tax on new development. And a tax is very different than a fee. Taxes generally revenue-raising in general, or revenue-raising in nature. In many states we work in, you have to go to the voters to get authorization for a tax. And a fee is typically designed to cover the cost of something. So for instance, the city sets its building permit fees to cover the cost of that direct and indirect cost for that review. And with impact fees, we have to take it a step further. We have to meet three prongs of a legal test. The first is we have to, through the analysis, demonstrate nexus of needs. So the study shows that North Augusta has grown, that growth is going to continue into the future. So we have to document that. We also have to show benefit, and we show benefit two ways. One is through the timing of the expenditure, and many impact fee acts prescribe the timeframe for which you have to spend the money. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And then the other part of benefit is geographic. And so that really gets into large cities, large counties, where we're trying to guard against, you know, folks in southern Lancaster County paying for schools in northern Lancaster County, right? Most cities, particularly cities the size of North Augusta, you're providing a citywide level of service. And so there's generally one benefit or one service area. The final prong we have to meet is what we call proportionality. And that's why we just don't have a residential fee versus a non-residential fee. We differentiate between single-family and multifamily housing. We distinguish between office and retail and industrial because all of these land uses have different indicators of demand. So for instance, we are proposing a transportation fee. Retail generates more trips than office. Office generates more trips than industrial. And so the fees have to be commensurate with that level of demand on the transportation system. So I mentioned methodologies. And the way to think about impact fee calculations is we can either look to the pasts, we can look to the present, or we can look to the future. And so when we look to the past, that's what we call a cost recovery or a buy-in approach. What it means is that either through foresight or through accident, it doesn't matter. All that matters is that we have up-fronted infrastructure from which new development will benefit. And so the fee is designed to recoup a portion of that cost or the growth-related portion of that cost. So for instance, a simple example is, let's assume a wastewater treatment plant has a capacity of 10 million gallons a day, and we're currently operating at 6 million gallons a day. Well, new development buys into that remaining 4 billion gallons a day in order to recoup your investment into that system. When we look to the present, we call that a consumption-based approach or incremental expansion approach. It's somewhat formulaic in terms of the calculation where we document where the community is in terms of, for instance, the number of acres we have per thousand for Parks and Recreation, or the amount of square footage we have per person and job for fire, for instance. And then we look at, well, what does it cost us to build, you know, a square foot of fire station? Or what does it cost us to buy an acre of land? What does it cost to improve an acre of parkland, et cetera? And we calculate the fee on that basis. And by default, since we're taking a snapshot of our current levels of service, there is no existing deficiency. And why is that important? Well, one, we can't use impact fees to correct existing deficiencies, right? And that leads me to the plan-based approach, which typically is used when a community has an adopted master plan. More importantly, when that master plan has a funding component. And why is the funding component important? Because generally, these master plans are designed to elevate the level of service. So again, you're asking new growth to correct an existing deficiency. So there has to be a funding plan in place to bring everybody up to this new level of service. So you may get a higher fee, but there's also some exposure. So if there's a recession and you've committed yourself to build, let's say, a $10 million park master plan, well, if that revenue's not here, you still have to build the plan. It's just that now instead of impact fees, we're going to use general fund monies. Where if we take that incremental expansion approach, if there's a recession, we just have to build to the level we collected, right? Because there is no existing deficiency. And conversely, if growth is faster, we just have more money to build more infrastructure, right? But that's what we mean by impact fee methodologies. So I did mention impact fee acts. South Carolina is one of 29 states that does have a governing act. There are a few things in the act that are unique to South Carolina, but a lot of things that are very similar to other acts. So for instance, you have to publish an annual report. That's required in all states. Impact fee revenue has to be, excuse me, maintained in an interest-bearing account. That's common among states. However, one of the interesting things about the South Carolina Act is that it does prescribe that monies be spent within three years of the scheduled date of construction in the CIP. Many acts just say you have seven years to spend the money, or you have 10 years to spend the money. What this means, and there's been some considerable confusion amongst South Carolina clients, is some people have interpreted that to mean that if I come in for a building permit and pay you an impact fee, you have to spend my money within three years. No. What it means is if we say we're going to build Jones Road in 2030, we will have to have built Jones Road by 2033, right? So we do have a little lag or leeway in terms of when or how we spend the money and how soon we have to spend the money. Any fees increases other than inflationary would require an updated study. The real big, you know, difference between South Carolina Impact Fee Act and other impact fee acts is it does have a requirement that the fee study have an analysis that estimates the effect of imposing impact fees on housing affordability within the city. The act doesn't prescribe any sort of ramifications or amelioration efforts that if we do decide or find that it has an impact that we have to reduce the fee. It doesn't define criteria for, you know, what does affordability mean? So we typically look at things like, well, what does it do to a mortgage payment? You know, does it exceed 33% of the household income required to obtain a mortgage? And so it's a very nebulous requirement, but yet it's a requirement in the Impact Fee Act itself. So when we design the impact fee, we have to guard against new development paying twice. Once through the impact fee, and then typically again through other streams of revenue, whether it's dedicated revenue sources, like a sales tax that goes strictly to parks or strictly to transportation, for instance, or through debt service payments. So I'm going to talk about these two, the debt service and dedicated revenues first. These credits are, for lack of a better term, they're baked in the methodology. They are part of the calculation. We have to look at, you know, do you have dedicated revenues? Do you have existing debt service? Do you plan on issuing debt for future infrastructure? And again, it's baked into the methodology. That site-specific credit is what's spelled out in your resolution or your ordinance. And that's for instances where, for instance, a developer comes through the door and says to the city, I'm going to give you 30 acres of parkland to build an athletic complex. Well, if we have a park impact fee and it includes a land acquisition component, we're double-dipping, so to speak. We're getting land, but we're also going to charge those new houses for land as well. So a development agreement has to be worked out between the city and the applicant in order to make them whole so that they're not paying twice. So that's what we mean by a site-specific credit. So in terms of the impact fee study that we prepared for the city of North Augusta, it does have five different fee categories. Water, wastewater, parks and recreation, transportation, and sanitation. and sanitation. As part of the establishing that nexus, the first thing that we have to do as a consulting firm is we have to document what development do we have in the city of North Augusta now, and what is our projection of development going forward? And you can see here, we have a summary of the development projections. We are projecting an increase of around 5,000 additional persons, an increase of almost 2,550 housing units. From a non-residential perspective, we are projecting an increase of almost 1,870 additional jobs, and that equates to about 766,000 additional square feet of non-residential activity. Now, let's turn our attention to the draft Parks and Recreation slide, or fee calculation. We are recommending the citywide level of service or the citywide service area. There are two components here. That's, one is land, as well as improvements and amenities. The costs are allocated 100% to residential development, because you are not a net importer of jobs. Your city is building parks for new residents. You're not building parks for economic development reasons. And our estimate, when we look at your existing levels of service, because we took this consumption-based approach or the incremental-expansion approach, we take your existing levels of service and we apply those to the development projections I just showed you, to get an estimate of, if that projection holds true, what does new development demand over the next 10 years? So, that estimate is about 31 additional acres at a cost of about $787,000 to purchase, and then 12 additional park improvements at a cost of about $3 million. This slide here shows you the draft fee calculation. A single-family unit would pay a fee of $1,607. A multifamily or an apartment unit would pay a fee of about $910. And then this table here shows you the, what we call the impact fee cash flow. And because we're using that consumption-based approach, and remember, I told you that it represents a low-risk proposition, meaning that we're not going to have to rely on other revenues to fund the plan. In a consumption-based approach, unless there's a credit calculation, the revenue approximates expenditures, and that's exactly the case we have here, where the projected expenditures are 3.7 million, but projected fee revenue is 3.7 as well. Now, that doesn't mean that the city can choose to build $6 million in additional park impact fee, but under that development projection, that additional revenue is going to come from the city. New growth is only going to contribute 3.7 to that. The other expenditure would represent an increase to your level of service. Next slide. Let's focus on sanitation. Again, a citywide service area. We use that consumption-based approach. We have sanitation vehicles. One of the limits to the South Carolina Impact Fee Act is it does limit vehicles to those with a value over $100,000. So, there are certain pieces of equipment that we can't include in the calculation, just like we can't include police vehicles in South Carolina like we do in other states as well. The costs are allocated 100% to residential development, and there's a 10-year demand approximately two vehicles at $455,000 over the next 10 years. That results in a fee per house of $193 for a single-family unit and $109 for an apartment building, or, excuse me, an apartment unit within an apartment building. And our cash flow analysis is shown here. Projected fee revenue is $455,000 against expenditures of $450,000. Now, let's talk about transportation, a citywide service area. The fee components are street maintenance vehicles and improvements from the arts draft master transportation plan. One of the limitations we had with this impact fee is because we don't have traffic modeling that shows specifically what portion of each planned road improvement is correcting existing deficiencies versus adding additional capacity. In order to be fair, we have to allocate the total cost of the CIP over total vehicle trips over the end of the 10-year period, so that everybody is treated equally. And so, the new development isn't paying more than its proportionate share, or more than its fair share for other, for lack of a better term. So, this is the transportation CIP. It does total $51.7 million, and when we spread that out over that demand base of 2034 trips, that equals a cost per trip of $380. This equates to a fee from a single-family unit of $2,802. For a multifamily unit, it's $997. We look at, from a non-residential perspective, because retail development generates the greatest number of vehicle trips, it has the highest fee per thousand square feet, $4,699. That's followed by office and services at 2085, and institutional uses at 1367, and industrial development at $914 per thousand square feet. Because of this plan-based approach, and the fact that we have to come up with other revenues, the cash flow is very different than what we've shown you for parks and sanitation. Where here, we have a CIP that we would commit ourselves to build at 51 million, but we're only going to get 8.8 million impact fees, meaning that we're going to have to come up with $43 million from other revenue sources, whether that's the general fund or grants, federal dollars, state dollars, et cetera. There is a value proposition that needs to be taken into account before implementing this fee. Options you would have related to this fee is you could back off on the $51 million CIP and say, you know, we've decided as a city that we're only going to build a $20 million CIP or a $5 million CIP, whatever that amount is, right? But we have to feel comfortable with what we're committing ourselves to from other revenue sources as it relates to transportation. Now, turning our attention to water, the water and the wastewater fee are cost recovery or buy-in approaches, where we're, for water, we're looking at the water service area, and the fee component is recouping a portion of the city's investment into the water system. So, your investment in water treatment is about $25 million, or $25.9 million. Your share of capacity is 12 million gallons a day, and so that equals a cost per gallon of $2.16. And when you apply that on a per-meter basis, and we look at your equivalent units or equivalent single-family unit demand of 188 gallons, a single-family house would pay a fee of about $406 per meter, and it graduates and increases by meter size. Same approach with wastewater, the service areas, the wastewater service area, and the fee component is the city's share of the Aiken County Public Service Authority wastewater treatment plant. So, again, it's a buy-in approach. And your investment, over time, has been $6.5 million. You have 8.6 million in a lot of capacity, so it's a very low cost per gallon, and a very low fee, which we'll see on the next slide. And that fee is $109, for instance, for a three-quarter-inch meter, which is what a single-family unit would be charged. So, here's your impact fee summary. When we look at parks, transportation, and sanitation, the nonutility fees, $4,602 for a single-family unit, 2016 for a multifamily unit. We look from a non-residential perspective. Commercial is the highest at $4,699, all the way office at 2085, institutional at 1367, industrial at 914. And then, as we just discussed, the utility fees would be on a per-meter basis, and it's very difficult to project those going forward, because different businesses require different meter sizes. And then, from a comparison perspective, and typically, it's much easier to compare these on a residential basis, and so we're just looking at nonutility development impact fees right here. So, when we compare you all from other jurisdictions in South Carolina, you're shown here in green. You're sort of at the middle of the pack. It is important to note that Somerville, which has the highest fees right now, we would just retain in Somerville to update those. So, you would assume that, like most other fees that we've calculated, those are going to increase, particularly since theirs are about six or seven years old. But you can see that, again, you're sort of at the middle of the pack, about $4,602 on a single-family unit, plus the $109 for wastewater and the 406 for utilities. But not all of these jurisdictions have utility fees, and so we wanted to have sort of an apples-to-apples comparison. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know for the new council members, this was probably like drinking from a fire hose. You probably have some questions, so I'm happy to answer anything you have.
If I may. So, Carson's going to have some great answers on a lot of the technical questions that you may have, but if you would allow us, I'd like to go through the staff recommendation before we get into Q and A.
Yeah.
That way, you, you know, we may answer some questions doing it that way, and that way, we can, you know, put some things to bed here and move forward. So, understand that, you know, we've had a little bit longer time with the staff to coordinate with Carson and talk about kind of the impacts here. So, I wanted to walk through with you about our staff recommendations, because Carson gave a lot of great data, but really wanted to hone that so that you had something to consider as we run into a potential ordinance consideration in the near future, if that is the council's desire. So, with that, let's go to the next slide. So, the bottom line is, of all the impact fees that were proposed, the transportation fee is the one that concerns the staff the most, because it requires a large match. So, even though you can degrade that overall match, we're still going to have a match requirement, and I cannot, in good faith today, tell you I'm going to find $43 million. And through either arts funding or federal funding, that assumes a lot. And the concern that I have is that if we collect impact fees for transportation purposes and we cannot come up with a match, then Carson, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are required to return that money to the developers. It can't just be held. So, we would be, you know, drawing in, you know, these fees and having to sit on them for a period of time, and then refund them at a later date if we cannot come up with $43 million. And while I have some level of faith in my personal fundraising, the federal government, $43 million is well beyond my capacity, and I don't know how I'd find that money for y'all. So, the bottom line is, even though there's a good methodology to how do you get to the transportation fee, and I find no fault with Carson's numbers, I just have a serious reservation about our ability to find the match funding that would be required. So, out of that $51 million, you know, $8 million coming from development, $43 million coming from the city, and even if you cut that in half and said, hey, you know, find us 20 points under $1 million, or 21 points under $1 million, I don't know how I'd find it, or guarantee that we could find it. So, I have serious reservations about the transportation aspect of it, just based on our own ability to find those match funds. So, that's a large portion of the impact fees, and I know that puts a crimp on how much impact fee could be drawn from new development. I thought we'd at least put that out there at the first slide, because that's the biggest impact, if you will, of what Carson's presented. Next slide. And I'll cut to the chase, is that we recommend doing the impact fees on all other aspects, so water, wastewater, and parks and rec. Part of that has to do with the fact there's no match required, and part of it is because we've seen that there is growth in those areas and that they're going to be, you know, fees are going to be brought by all citizens, and also, as the development comes online, it's got a higher load on our existing infrastructure, potentially causing new infrastructure. So, for both water and wastewater, we recommended adopting those impact fees as written. Next slide. Again, also, for parks and rec, we request that you address those as written. There is no match requirement. It goes strictly to residential development in this particular case, so it would not impact any commercial development coming to the city, so that's a straight residential funding requirement, and then also allows us to maintain our parks and rec at the current service level. And we have some existing parks and rec master plan documents, which led to Carson's analysis for park improvements, and so those are things that we could do, not just alone as an impact fee, but potentially linking up with some future capital project sales tax, $5 as well. Next slide. Again, sanitation, also, we recommend moving forward with that. Again, does not require a match, but as you can see, as we add additional developments, and especially some of these larger ones, you know, the mayor and I had a conversation probably in the first six months of his tenure about, you know, how are we going to service all these new developments that come online, and how many more trash trucks, and how many more other things are we going to need to be able to fund, to be able to handle these developments? And this is a methodology in a way that we can offset some of that growth and some of those costs. Next slide. So, if you add that all up, those are the total number of costs per single-family home. So, again, if you take the transportation out of it, it's a little over $2,300 per new single-family residence, that would be coming into the city of North Augusta with the building permit. Next slide. So, actually, if you can back that up one, thank you, to the final slide there? Perfect. So, ultimately, what the city staff is recommending, is based on Carson's analysis, is all impact fees minus transportation. And again, you can see that's, you know, per residence for a single family, and we can break that out. And I think we've got other documents that'll show what it would be for multi-family. This is an opportunity for us to move forward, and I would tell you that the number of growing cities here in the state of South Carolina are moving forward with impact fees, and not to cut the chase for the mayor, but I know the mayor's had conversations with a number of his counterparts in growing cities, and by and large, the cities that have impact fees have recommended that they do them, and that their only regret is they didn't do them sooner. And so, with that, I'll pause, and, you know, either Tommy Paradise, myself, or Carson will be happy to take questions from the council, but I wanted to at least kind of put a point on it and show, this is our staff recommendation based on Carson's analysis.
I'm going to jump in it first, then everybody can follow. Carson, I've got some things for you. Couple of questions I had, some things I put when you were here about five months ago. I want to get clarification of my old notes. So, when you talk about impact fee fundamentals can't be used for operations, maintenance, or replacement? Give me an example when you say maintenance. What does that fall under?
Roof, like, for instance, roof replacements, or, you know, replacing nets at a tennis court, or, you know, putting a new basketball goal, or replacing a basketball goal at an existing.
Replacing one, okay.
Right. Now, caveat is, you know, many communities do this. Let's say you've got a dilapidated tennis court, but you replace it, replace one tennis court with three tennis courts, basically, two-thirds of that would be impact fee-eligible.
So, stay up here, because I've got some other questions. May that be part of this. So, what about the Country Club property? Would that be used for justification for the parks and rec?
So, to kind of get Carson oriented, the Country Club property is a property that the city already owns, a defunct golf course essentially, in that, you know, we have, the parks and master plan had laid out some certain options for the Country Club property. We do not currently have a funding source for that, and so that's, I guess, the root question, is can we use impact fees for, if we want to put like a new feature in the Country Club property that's a parks and rec feature, can impact fees be used for that?
Yes, certainly. So, yeah, so you can use, so you've got two components to the fee. You've got the land acquisition component, and then you've got the improvement component. So, there's nothing that says that you have to build improvements on new parks. Communities all the time have parks that may be 50% developed, and so they're using impact fees to buy additional land, and they're using the other component of the impact fee to make improvements on existing parks as well as new parks. So, the Country Club property would be something that if you wanted to make improvements to, you could certainly use impact fees for that.
Okay, very good. Okay. Oh, all right. So, under evaluate needs for credits, you talk about already having dedicated revenues. So, we have a capital project sales tax through the county, one cent. So, if we have designated an initiative, X dollars, that's already a capital project sales tax, can this be used as part of that? Is that considered your double taxation?
Right. So, the conversation we had was you need to have two pots of money. You shouldn't be used, and if we've gotten this wrong, we'll need to calculate this. But you should be using the capital project sales tax for the non-impact fee-related expenditures. So, you know, if you're going to spend money on parks and have impact fees, I would be using the park with the sales tax to do the roof replacements and the other things, and using the impact fees for the capacity, because otherwise, if you mix those two pots of money, there's potentially, you need to give a credit.
Okay, very good. Talk to me, we don't, there's not any, I know you've got a big graph here, but we're talking a lot about the residential piece. I guess my question, we might have talked about this last time, let's talk about the commercial risk. So, you know, I had some, I made some notation that, and I don't know, this was something back, this is all October, I don't know, Tommy, if this was something you'd given us or not, but I had highlighted something about may not make additional exemptions. So, I guess what I'm trying to understand is... So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is the numbers in here, I may be missing it, what about a church, is gonna build a church or a commercial? Where do we see that impact?
So, I think that's a moot point at this point, because the only, the only fees that you're, that, under the staff's proposal that would affect commercial development is the water and wastewater, and those are extremely, extremely low, and they would be based on a per meter basis. Okay, good.
Yep. That wasn't clarified before, so, okay, thank you. Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting closer. So when you talk about parks and recreation, you have on here 10-year demand, land 31 acres, park improvements, 12 improvements. You can say, what makes up an improvement?
Good question. So there's sort of a, in the study, there's sort of a universe of all the improvements that could include parking spaces, gazebos, you know, lit ball fields, tennis courts, basketball courts, et cetera.
Pickleball courts.
Right, pickleball courts, et cetera. And so what we do is we get a, basically a weighted average cost of what's the average improvement, and so there's nothing, so basically you're, it's the value, replicating the value of your existing system. Okay? On a per acre basis.
Okay. And when you show the revenue and, and fee on parks and rec, and I'm just missing this, I'm sure, you show projected fee revenue of 3.7 million, with about 3 million of that being park amenities and other little bit, 700 park land. Again, where's the expenditures coming from? Where are you calculating that 3.7 expenditures? What is that exactly?
Right, so we've looked at, well, I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, but, you know, maybe the, you know, the level of service is .0037 acres per person, and we know what it costs to buy an acre, and maybe the cost per person for improvements is, you know, $213 or whatever it is. So that's what we're doing, is we're applying those levels of service standards to that development projection.
Do a dollar.
Okay. And then saying, okay, if you grow by 5,000 people, based on this level of service, you're gonna generate a need of X.
Okay, uh, I'm almost finished here, I think, for the time being. All right, I think that's, those are my, my initial questions, so thank you. Who's next? Want to go?
Yeah, I'll go. Yeah.
So the 31, 2.5 acres, how is that based? I'm sure it's based like per individual.
Right, so we're looking at, yeah, so we're not, we're not, we're not saying, well, the city's parks and rec master plan has an adopted level of service of, let's say, two and a half acres per thousand, but when we look at what's on the ground today, maybe the level of service is 1.7 acres per thousand. We're basing it on the 1.7 acres, not that desired level of service.
So, so it kind of takes in place what we currently already have as well, and you're taking a whole.
Exactly.
10 years, this population's gonna be, this is the total amount, well, this is what we have, this is what we need, correct?
Exactly. A lot of times, they, these master plans count, for instance, access to properties owned by the school district, federal lands, et cetera, in order to, so there's all sorts of different ways of measuring levels of service, but we're looking at what is the city actually owned today.
I think my biggest concerns that I'd like to understand a little bit better, I, I know you said the affordable housing study is, you know, there, there are not a lot of parameters around it, and there are no implications based on whatever that says, but I do have concerns on what the impact of these fees would be, you know, and I, I guess, the way I would phrase that is, I mean, are we solving an infrastructure problem but exacerbating an affordable housing issue which we already have in the community, especially when you look at what it's gonna cost to build multifamily, uh, you know, per unit cost, you're talking, I think I calculated if we exempt out the transportation feature, looking at about $200,000 in additional costs for multifamily development. Um, you know, that's, at least appears that it's certainly gonna have some, some effect on, on affordable housing. Do, and that's, I, I see your look, cause that's what I wanna say, I've read several studies out there, some indicate that land values adjust down and that offsets any, any increases to, to the impact fees, and others say that there are impacts, so, you know, I guess I'm, I'm just missing invisible hand, you know, what, what other issues are we creating by.
Good question, good question. And you're right, so depending on the, the economy we're in at the time, uh, in a robust economy, I would argue that, uh, the development fees are probably being marked up and passed on to the home buyer, because the developer has a carrying, or the home builder has a carrying cost, right? Uh, in a very soft market, everybody takes a hit, the farmer who sells the land, uh, you know, is getting less per acre, the, the, the home builder's taking less profit, and the, and the purchaser's bearing a portion of that as well. But the thing to take, take into account, and, and I just did some quick math on my phone here, uh, at the proposed level, I want, I wanna say it was $2,300, something like that? Yeah, it's about $10 a month on a mortgage, right? So when you look at it in those terms, and I can, and I can tell you, when we were doing, uh, a school impact fee in York County, uh, and this was before the interest rates rose, but a $15,000 school impact fee meant $87 a month. Now, $15,000 sounds like a lot, right? When you think about the fact that you're, most people are gonna put a, a down payment, then you're gonna amortize that on a 30-year loan and over 360 payments, that, when you put it in those terms, and I, and I'm not trying to, 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 uh, you know, uh, you know, denigrate the concern over affordable housing, but we have to put it in perspective, because a lot of times I hear a lot of claims, when we're working with stakeholder community or meetings where, you know, every, every thousand dollars, you just price 5,000 people out of the market, and you're like, really? Thousand dollars amortized over 30 years is X amount of dollars, uh, but we have to put it in perspective, and so the proposed fee, you know, is about 12, $12 a month on a mortgage.
Another quick question. Sorry, I got my mind going. So mortgage, you know, uh, interest is tax deductible? Is there any talk maybe on the federal level that, or impact fees tax deductible?
Uh, no, no, uh, but, but I would say that, uh, because this is, you're not the first person to ask, ask that question, uh, because a lot of communities, particularly out west, like for instance, we do a lot of work in Colorado, and sometimes they, uh, they will set up what's called a metro district, and, which becomes a special assessment, and special assess, so they're paying for infrastructure through the special assessment, which since it's not a property tax, you can't deduct the interest on your, on your mortgage, but if you've paid the impact fee and it's rolled into the price of the house, you are able to deduct it.
You see where I was going with that?
By default, right.
I have a question for you and a question for Mr. Jim. Let's say, this is, just to be clear, this is on new land construction only, so if I live here and for some reason, act of God, whatever, be fired, my house is totally destroyed, I need to build a new house, I'm not bringing any additional people here, I'm not taking away or adding to the infrastructure issues, does this affect me?
No. Replacement, like for instance, in your scenario, you burn, your house burns down, you build another one, you know, 99% of the ordinances in the United States say no, it's a one for one replacement.
So this effectively, for that reason, doesn't affect anybody living here current?
Right.
All right, Mr. Jim. Does this ease pressure on us in the future to raise property taxes and village rights? Because we have to have that money come from somewhere, this is infrastructure we're gonna need, correct? Is that how I'm understanding this?
I'm gonna give you a very legal answer, Councilman, which is, it depends. Uh, some of the fees, uh, I think that are in here aren't relative to the general fund. So for example, things that involve in water and wastewater are in what we call enterprise funds, uh, and so that is not directly tied to your property taxes, it has to do with the fees that you have associated with the service, the amount of water that you draw from the city, or, or the amount of wastewater that you're flowing into the city. The thing that would be most germane to the property tax discussion really is the parks and rec, uh, aspects. And so there's nothing that says you would have to grow the parks at a rate that's commensurate with the level of service that you have today, that's really a city council decision about, you wanna maintain certain quality of life standards within the city north of Augusta as it grows, or do you not? Uh, and so the answer is if you do choose as a city council to maintain a certain level of service for parks and rec as the city grows, then that's gonna have to be paid for. And so ultimately, you could choose to pay for it, uh, you know, with the general fund, which is, you know, millage rates, and you could do that by moving money from one area to another, you could decrement one existing city service to plus up another city service, or if you wanna not degrade those city services, then you're gonna have to get additional revenue to meet those requirements. And so you either do that through increasing the millage, uh, or offsetting with impact fees. I wouldn't say that this is gonna prevent millages from ever increasing within the city, uh, but it is gonna deflate the amount of millage increases that would be required if the city council chose to meet that current quality of life that you have today. Did that answer the question, Councilman?
Thank you.
Did I get the right question?
Yes, sir.
Question?
My question, and I wanna ask it without feeling stupid, the 23, 315 on the recommendation for a single, but like Denny said, this is on new development, the impact fees. Now, when you say a single, that 20, 2,315, does that cost go to the builders, or?
Whoever pulls, whoever pulls the building permit, I know, a lot of times at these meetings, we use the term develop, we just use the term developer. It really means whoever's pulling the building permits.
And who would that be, though?
Depends, you know, like sometimes the large national chains are coming in, and they're both the builder and the developer, sometimes you have a developer who sells lots off to individual builders, so it's whoever is the company that's pulling the building permit.
All right, and this is 2,315 per house, so if you were building 200 houses, you'd multiply that, and then that person would pay that, but that would cover all of our impact fees, water, waterways, park and rec and sanitation?
Yes, ma'am.
If we move down this road, down the road, what, what's the next step, meaning, what do we have to do as far as this fall on Tommy, uh, planning department, uh, parks and rec, Rick, I mean, where, who puts that plan in place? Is that strictly us? Is there guidance from you? Cause you talk about, I mean, you, this is, I'm sure we're paying for more than just overheads here.
Right.
So, uh, who's gonna give us that guidance of how we do that to make sure we are doing it the right way, to say, yes, hey, if the country club is something that, I mean, right off the bat, I'm telling you, I mean, that, that's, from what you're telling me, that's very possible. So, you know, do we put that and then go back and say, is this something that meets the criteria? Or are you giving us guidance, walk me through?
Good question.
If you vote on it positively, what do we do?
Right, great question. So unlike some states, like Montana and Georgia and a few other states, actually prescribe that you have a development impact fee advisory committee, and many times they give guidance on what's eligible to, to spend the money on, but we did prepare an ordinance, and the ordinance has a lot of this stuff spelled out in it.
Okay.
Uh, but in terms of the administration of the fee, typically it's administered through the planning and building departments, and of course, finance is responsible for publishing the annual report, but that can be as simple as a one pager, that says we collected 250,000 in impact fees, we earned, you know, $16 in interest, and, you know, now we've got, you know, we're carrying this full. Okay. And also as a firm, I mean, we are always here for you guys in terms of administrative and implementation questions. I get calls every day, or, you know, you know, uh, clients saying, hey, we just, somebody just walked through the door, has a go-kart facility, where do we classify that? And we'll, we'll, it takes us 30 minutes to calculate a specialized fee, and we don't charge you.
But does this fall under, like with Linda, when we get audited annually, is that gonna be another component of what they are auditing to ensure that we are abiding by this? Cause I'm sure there've been lawsuits about how this is being done properly or not.
That's a good question. Maybe, I know in Arizona, there is an official audit, uh, as part of the act, but I don't know how, I mean, I, I don't deal with CAFRs, so I don't know how impact fees get rolled into your certified annual financial report, uh, but as long as you're publishing an annual report and, and taking it to the council every year, that's what most communities do.
Now, one more comment, question, I'm sorry, Kevin, was you gonna say something? So, in voting for this, I mean, I have my doubts too. It looks like if we really don't go with this, then no doubt taxes are gonna have to be raised. No if, ands or buts, if we don't continue to provide, provide the services for our new home people coming in versus this. But then on the other hand, this particular thing, the ones that are getting caught are the new people moving in, new people, you know, versus, hey, we all pay taxes, we all doing the same thing. So, I don't know, Jim, if that's a quick sort of thing for you, or what? I mean, it bothers me, I don't wanna raise taxes, but common sense tells us, we can't keep going if we don't. And then if we do this, it's, it's on the new people, too.
Well, yeah, but when you say it's on the new people, huh? You say it's on the new people.
Well, I mean.
I mean, it's on, I mean, the new person, I'm not buying this house, I'm not getting the bill for $2,300. I mean, that's up, the, the builder is gonna already, the builder's already passed fees on to you and I when we buy a house.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's so.
The builder's paying it.
Yeah.
Or the developer, whoever.
The builder's gonna pay it, the homeowner's gonna eat it.
It's not, it's not like I'm buying this house and I'm necessarily gonna get a separate bill for $2,300.
No, no, I don't mean that, but I'm just saying, the builder will pay it, but you know that rastle's gonna go to the homeowner, so that's who's gonna pay it, they're the homeowner. Well, I know it's a challenge, but, but that's what I said.
I hear you.
It's that on this hand, and then we gotta raise taxes. And as I've said 100 times, we pride ourselves on 25 years of no tax raising, that was the worst thing this city ever did, I'm gonna tell you. We should've raised tax a little bit each year to continue to grow with our capital project, we did away with that a while, you know, to me, without raising taxes, we got ourselves sort of in a mess, but we're pulling out now, so that's just my concern with it, I don't know.
One more thing, uh, kind of, um, so talking about like paying the fee when the permit is pulled, is there a way that we could maybe split the cost for whoever develops the lot? I know some builders, you know, they do it all, you know, they buy the land, they put the infrastructure, and then they build it. There's no way to.
There's challenges with that.
Okay.
One more minor question for you. Now, I've, I've, I've done my six hours of webinars on this. I know worst-case impact fee scenario, California-level impact fee, it could slow growth 25% in, in a situation like that, but we're not looking at anything like that here. In your opinion, are you seeing this implemented? Does this help towns grow healthier than in places that don't use these? And before you answer, I wanna say, in a town where we have, it's a beautiful town, we have a 44-year-old fire truck, I agree with you, Ms. Pat, we've got to do things, make sure that we don't ever have to put that in front of council again, that we gotta ask for a new fire truck when we have one that's 44 years old. Now, I know this doesn't affect public safety, but does this help us grow healthier and be a better town and not be in that type of situation?
In my experience, yes. I mean, I've been doing this 32 years, and we've, we've got, I mean, I, I think we have 90-something impact fee jobs right now, and over 60 of those are repeat clients, and some of those clients, this is their sixth or seventh time going to the well. If impact fees were slowing down development or discouraging development, these communities wouldn't keep going to the well. Uh, and in our experience, you know, unless you're an outlier, by outlier, I mean, let's say everybody in the, in the area is at 10,000, 12,000, whatever the impact fee is, and you're at 80, right? That's an outlier. But if you're 10, and other one's 14, and one's seven, we have not seen empirically how that slows down development or discourages development.
Because ultimately, somebody looking at buying a new house, that $2,000 is not that much, you know?
And most people who are paying, who buy a house don't even know there's an impact fee in it.
Are you familiar with, this is very early on, the concept of concurrency, you're seeing a lot in South Carolina?
Yeah, concurrency, adequate, adequate public facilities.
So, and that's basically where a municipality puts the infrastructure in on the front end before any growth comes in, right?
Some, sort of.
Of course, but my question is, so when, and this is way off with the general assembly, but we'll start hearing more about it, uh, my question is, you would not have both, I mean, eventually it'd be, you're either gonna go with the impact fee, or your choice would be not have the impact fee, do that, right?
And sometimes, you know, I, I, so our, the land judge attorney we work with, Tyson Smith's the primary author of most of the drafting on that APFO bill in South Carolina, and, uh, you know, the, so a lot of times, impact fees and APFO work hand in hand.
Okay.
Right? And, uh, And, but the idea is, is that there has to be available infrastructure capacity in order for you to get development approved.
Post and Courier, Elizabeth, she didn't write it, but one of her folks, great article about this concept called concurrency, I don't know if y'all read it, post current last month, just, anyway, doesn't change what we're doing, because it's way down the road.
But impact fees are forever, or we can come back and say we don't, like you said, whether it's, maybe people say, well, I don't want to move in North Augusta because of that, and we see a decrease, is it something we can go back and say, let's don't do it anymore?
Sure.
And I know you're talking about apartments, you know, we put a hold on apartment building in here for two and a half years, you know, so.
You know, it's interesting, if you look at the cities in South Carolina, and I know this is not all of them, but I guess the ones on your sheet here are ones that have used some type of impact fees?
They've either had an impact fee study done, now some, some communities, particularly counties, have chosen not to go forward for whatever reason.
Yeah, but I think Aiken's looking at it again.
Yeah, they called us.
Clinton, South Carolina, you know, I mean, which is as small as you can get. Tega Kay is really where I heard it the first time, up at the lake, then you got, right, you got big areas, you know, kind of like in, then on out, big, but then you got Clemson. So, I mean, I think it's some, Pat, to your point, is the city prided itself for years of never increasing the millage? And the other thing is, I guess my, my question to us is, why are we waiting to 2025 to have this conversation about impact? It's been going on at least 10 years, right?
Well, like I said, you can look back, you know, and you wonder why you voted on this, you wonder why you voted on that. At the time, you thought that was the right thing. 25 years from today, they're going to look at us and say, what in the world are they doing? I mean, I'm telling you, it keeps going as years go on, you know?
You got any questions for Carson? Because I don't, he won't be.
I've got.
Won't be coming back, so ask him why. Got to go ahead and ask him, y'all jump right in.
So.
I'll be coming back for the adoption. Yeah. Okay, good.
I know, you, you had mentioned the commercial, and since you've taken out, the, the recommendation was to remove the, the transportation piece, and that was the biggest part of the commercial. So just kind of help me understand, because I'm, I'm concerned with, maybe we have a lot of, or we're trying to get more localized restaurants and things in, in town here, we've got some new shops that have just been built and things like that. So what, what would they be looking at, say, a restaurant coming in, having to do a build out in a, in a, in a building commercial setting, what, what's that fee going to look like?
I could give you an idea, if we could put the other presentation up, we could switch to that.
I've just heard like $20,000, $30,000, and I know that.
When you're saying a build out, you're talking about the building.
So the, like, let's say, FEED SAP, the building was already there, but they had to come in and pull permits to refit that whole restaurant and thing.
And if we could, yeah, if we could go, go to the water and wastewater.
It's not, it's not, it's not, I'm just thinking, that doesn't fall under.
Or any of the commercial space down at Riverside Village.
Go to the.
Lot fee summary. It'd be the project. So if we had had this on the front end, there would have been a cost versus on Beacon Bluff on the front end.
Okay.
Pretty sure. I hope I'm not reading wrong.
So if I understand your question correctly, the only impact fee they would be subject to would be the water and wastewater, and unless you're a large industrial user, you're probably going to be at a one and a half or a two-inch meter. So you're talking a two-inch meter, $2,748, $2,748, which is a pretty low impact fee, because, you know, in cities that, where you've got, you know, most of the time, water and sewer can be in the thousands.
Right.
You've got transportation, which is usually in the thousands. You had fire and police, usually fires, about 1,000 to 1,500, police probably 500 to 700. And particularly for, for retail-related and restaurant, that's going to be the highest of the, of the commercial impact fees. So this is a fairly modest impact fee for a commercial establishment compared to most communities.
The next question, maybe for you or Mr. Clifford, in some of my research, I've read that a lot of areas have had to hire additional personnel to manage the funds. Would that be our case?
The short answer, Councilman, is no. This in and of itself, I don't think tips the scales. I think, I wouldn't say that we wouldn't come back with a request for personnel over time, and I know you went on council at this point in time, but at the previous council, we had done a, a growth session talking about how much staff we were going to require over time by various departments. So I think when you look at the cumulative effect of growth on the city, that we are going to have to add staff to meet certain requirements, but I don't believe impact fees, that service in particular drives us to have, you know, a full-time equivalent to deal with all this. It's going to be incrementally more work in a number of different departments, but I think just by the fact that we have the growth that we have that's coming is going to require additional staff.
Another question, I know a lot of the new communities that are being built, they, the developer allows for park space, does that give them any kind of credit towards the parks and rec area of it?
Great question. So, and Tommy Crepey, if I misspeak here, they, they, most communities we work with require the developer set aside land that really is what we would refer to as the neighborhood park, that is neighborhood-specific, which is not part of the impact fee calculation. The impact fee calculation is for those parks where you're having league play and really have a, a citywide draw. So a lot of times, the park dedication requirement and the impact fee were part and parcel, where part of the exaction process to the subdivision ordinance, you're getting that neighborhood park, but the impact fee is paying for the athletic complex. That's all.
I, I found it very interesting that when you were totaling up all of the impact fees that a, that a developer or a homeowner would pay, that parks and rec got the biggest chunk of it. Because after 45 years in the field, we're always the first one to get cut. It was, you know, it's one of those things that people like to put their hat on to say that, you know, our parks facilities, and they are, are, are so good, and one of the things that makes North Augusta such a special place. But I just found it interesting that wastewater got a little bit, parks and rec got the giant, the giant portion of it. Does that mean that our parks and rec department is underfunded?
No, but I, I appreciate your observation, and it's sort of a, this generic hierarchy of fees is that generally water and wastewater are the highest, followed by transportation, then parks. The situation, you have a unique situation in how utilities are provided here, where you've got the arrangement with Aiken, and then you've got the, the treatment plant that you have that you're not expanding at this point. Where, you know, if you were a community that was, had a rapidly expanding utility system, those fees would be in the thousands, right? But park fees are typically, like I said, the fourth highest, because, and, and police are generally the lowest, because usually police has one asset, right? Their headquarters. Whereas the parks department typically has land all over, improvements all over, community and rec centers, et cetera, et cetera, so they have a lot of infrastructure. So that's, so that's why their fees tend to be higher.
Any other questions for Carson?
One other question. The proposed fees, this is some kind of a calculation based on number of people, but the proposal, I, I'm assuming the proposed fees is one of the things that would be under discussion, that if you did approve an impact fee, the rate of that for each of those items is also something that can be increased or decreased.
To a certain extent, you're right, Councilman. What, what I would refer to this is, is the maximum supportable. And what maximum supportable means is, based on your existing levels of service and the cost data that we've been given by the city, we can't justify anything higher. So to your point, if you say, well, I think the park fee should be 1,900 instead of 1,607, well, we don't have any data to support that. But as a council, you could decide, well, maybe we're only going to adopt 75% of the park fee.
Any other question for Carson? Any other questions for Jim or Tommy? Good job, thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Carson. All right, we just got one more briefing to get through, this is going to be quick, and let's talk about utility billing, all right. No changes on this slide, just keep scrolling on down. There are still hold there, if you will, we are still issues with the folks that pay between April 9th and 14th online. We did have a joint meeting with Five Serviceth Clover and Absence, and so there is some technical data that's now going back and forth between those agencies. We have an established weekly meeting with all of these contractors and vendors until we actually have this resolved, but this is in the technical channels between those three different companies to get that moving. So it's, we have movement there, but they haven't figured out the technical aspect of that yet, but that's on my calendar, I participate in those meetings because it's important and make sure that we have that locked in as we go forward. Next slide. And the change for the bottom line today is that the April 25th bills went to our mailer on Friday, but obviously with the long weekend, those bills were mailed out today. We should expect our citizens to receive those in the mail, probably Thursday through Saturday, so they'll be in uptick in traffic in the lobby at the end of the week and early next week. And I do not have the date that we're going to get the 5, 10 bills out, but I'm hoping to get an update tomorrow, and I'll furnish that to the mayor as soon as I have that.
And I will pause for any questions. Mr. Clifford, is the information table in the, the main foyer a permanent fixture, or is that temporarily while we?
That's a temporary asset that we have there, and as we have surge requirements, so for example, if we feel that, hey, we're starting to get overwhelmed in the lobby based on 425 billing customers, then we will immediately push administrative personnel out of other departments downstairs to deal with that, to help triage those requirements. But that's not a longstanding option, because we don't have personnel to do that on a full-time basis. Mr. Mayor, subject to your, any council questions? That concludes the staff portion of the study session for this evening.
Okay. Well, I think it's been very productive, so am I good? No questions or anything?
No hurricane update?
Uh, Councilman, we are going to a monthly status update for the hurricane, and you'll, I know you're, I know you're dying to need to do a slide, I will provide those to you next week.
All right, thank y'all for being here.